Hey everybody, we're live and I am really pleased to welcome back to the show Janani Rockman-John. And I think the last time I had you on the show, I had, you know, struggled with that, but I'm not struggling anymore, am I?
You are unfortunately, Zenny. My last name is Ramachandran.
Ramachandran. Got it. Ramachandran. Absolutely.
Yeah.
So first of all, welcome back and how are you doing?
I'm doing great. This is a beautiful early August afternoon. It's National Night Out. We're about to hit the streets with our team. Ready to get out there and help build community safety.
Yeah, and I love National Night Out. Tell me what National Night Out means to you.
Yeah, traditionally, it's meant to be a space where the public neighborhoods can convene with law enforcement, firefighters, other city officials in a way to build community trust and share ideas. And I see certainly value in that. I do expect to see both officers and firefighters out there today. However, I think what's more important these days, especially coming out of the pandemic, is building community safety. We don't know our neighbors anymore. We don't know who they are, how old they are, what kind of needs they may have. And the truth is, more active neighborhoods are safer neighborhoods. And the less we know anything about who lives down the street from us, the less we're going to be able to help out. There's an over-reliance on government institutions when it comes to safety and all of us need to step up and play our part.
I'm glad you said that because it leads to this question. Part of it I signaled off-camera, but I think I'm going to go into it now. I have some friends living in District 4 and I'm going to take this question out of order. They're moving. They're well-moneyed. They've been in Oakland for a long time, but they don't feel safe. And I'm sure that's not the first time you've heard that. What, from your perspective, is going on and what can we do to fix it?
So I knock on doors across District 4 four to five times a week and I've been doing that since early April. And that gives me perspective of not just the one or two, but hundreds, maybe even thousands of people contemplating on a daily basis whether or not they've had enough and they're ready to leave Oakland. Some people don't have the choice. They're forced out of Oakland because of affordable housing or crime or the threat of wildfires or fires and losing their homeowners insurance. Others are doing it by choice because they feel that the city is failing people. Basic constituent services, we don't really have that anymore. When you are calling to report a tree that's fallen down, something that basic, it shouldn't have to take up to a few days to get a response. When you see a baby animal stuck in a tree, that should also warrant similar response. And more importantly, if you're the subject of a violent crime or even a property crime, the city needs to respond to you as a constituent. That responsiveness to me is the fundamentals of a basic democracy, local government services.
Why do you think that response isn't happening?
There's a whole long history of reasons why we have slowly deprioritized basic constituent services. Sometimes it's wanting to, you know, essentially recreate the wheel and focus time and energy on new ideas. But in my opinion, what it essentially really comes down to right now has a lot to do with understaffing. It's not that city employees, most of whom are incredibly good, hardworking people, I come from a family of unionized city workers. It's not that people don't want to do their job, but when you're forced to do the job of two, two and a half, maybe even three people, you grow frustrated, you might want to leave the city yourself. And that's everyone from police, fire, to city planners, to secretaries in public works, to engineers, to folks doing mainstream mechanics. I mean, this is a crisis and we have to start recognizing that we are absolutely in a crisis of understaffing and the culture has to change.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. I worked for two mayors of Oakland, as you may know or don't know. But in my day, we had redevelopment. And what we used to do is we actually borrow liberally from our redevelopment budget to help pay staff salaries. But we don't, it's not that we don't have redevelopment to do it. Janani, it's that we don't use it. So what's your plan to straighten out this problem? And was that your cat?
That is my cat. She's a huge
Introduce your cat to us.
This is Kaya. She's my There's a second one behind the scenes, but this one will probably sit on my
Oh, she's Kaya's cutie pie. Cutie pie. How old, by the way?
This one's about five months. The other one will pop in. She's two.
Oh, it's just precious. Absolutely. So yeah, so those are your campaign assistants, I see.
They are my helpers. They give me breaks. They give me cuddles and attention and a lot of what I need. Except they don't, they don't call donors and they don't knock on doors, so.
But so getting back to the problem of funding workers today, what's your take on that, given that we don't use taxing of a financing like you should, in my opinion, you know?
Well, unfortunately, under the Jerry Brown administration at the state level, we did lose redevelopment dollars. We lost redevelopment agencies and that's a major strain for various issues, particularly affordable housing. Lost such an important aspect of our local funding for affordable housing and we've struggled since then to come up with what's going to fill that gaps and the reality is that we haven't. But when it comes to city staffing issues, there's always market factors in play. We know that we're still in a time where it's somewhat more of a job seeker's market. But to remain competitive as an employer, the city needs to pay market wages. When I was on the City of Oakland Public Ethics Commission, we had this strange responsibility of getting to set council salaries. So every two years, the council salary increase was generally CPI. Whatever the CPI increase was, that was the council salary increase. We don't have a fraction of that increase for the majority of city staff posts. And you know, even if we're not near and unions and other folks are not near the conversation about how close we have to get to CPI, we're just talking about market rate, living wages.
Tell me, as we talk, I'm going to shift gears a little bit because you're out there, you got your feet on the ground, literally, you're knocking on doors. I'm going to ask, what are people telling you, both the obvious and things that maybe we don't hear so much?
People, I think I referenced this earlier, people want to feel safe. People want to feel safe in their homes, in their own bodies, on the streets, not just in District 4, but any part of Oakland that they're traveling to. What the conflict, and that's the predominant thing. The second, the second most common things I hear at the door is fix the potholes. But when it comes to public safety, there are a wide variety of things that can make someone feel safe. Yes, it can involve having, and it should involve having a fully staff patrol. You know, thirty-five officers, thirty-five to forty officers on the shift is not enough to respond to the emergencies that we have. At the same time, we have to complement that intervention with proactive community building. It's the simple things, it really is the simple things of getting to know your neighbors that's going to lead to de-escalation when conflict comes up. My background involves a lot of domestic violence work and for years, having worked with survivors to create what's known as safety plans, so much of that involves, yes, if you're in a real emergency and you don't have any other options, you call 911 if that is what you think will make you safe. In addition to that, you need to have code words with your neighbors, with, with, with children who can run across two blocks to a safe person, a safe space. And all of that, all of that matters, not just in the domestic violence world, but in so many different contexts where we need to build public safety. So it's a combination of intervention, proactive community building and prevention work, which of course starts with economic opportunity.
You've been a candidate for this seat alone for a heck of a long time. All of a sudden, added challengers. But what was the motivating factor for you to run after having come off a close assembly race, which really could have gone either way? I mean, if you really, if you kind of break it down, and congratulations on that, that was your coming out party. What happened this time where you said, aha, I'm better, I can do this?
I decided extremely, in this extremely short period of time, maybe three, four days, that I wanted to continue the fight. I care deeply about Oakland, my home, and I want to make sure that we're heading in the right direction because right now we're not. Right now, things feel dysfunctional, things are dysfunctional, people are leaving, people don't want to come here, there's crises of different, of different worlds and quite literally, a few days after losing the race last year, I decided that that was just the first step in my journey, that I'm keeping up the fight, that my fight needs to start with focusing on Oakland.
Now, how much of that problem do you put on the current mayor? And I say that deliberately because I understand the mayor's handpicking people to run against you. Which is a compliment considering, you know, you're not the, you're not the incumbent, right? Say you about this situation.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, last year, we ran a tough fight, we ran a grassroots, people-powered movement and running a campaign in that style as a complete outsider, as someone that did not pay their dues in the conventional ways in the system, is going to piss some people off. And there are many people, as much as we have thousands of incredible supporters and allies and people that voted or donated or volunteered, volunteered their time for us, I know that I'm asked, you know, haters or people that really to me just don't know me yet. I understand coming from direct services and a direct services background that it takes time to build trust. I do not hold it against absolutely anyone who didn't support me last year because they didn't knew me and didn't know me, but they knew another candidate better. That's, that's how it goes. It takes time. I was on the other side of this table being skeptical of our electeds, of candidates that promised the world, and it took me time and needed for me to see action, to see work being done on promises for me to really trust people. So it's been wonderful since last year to go back to my roots, which is direct community services, to work with a variety of stakeholders in Oakland, build that trust and come back to them saying, I'm ready for the next stage of this fight. Will you, will you join our movement?
Talk to me about the homeless population and I'm going to say this in a way that I don't agree, okay? But there's a voice out there that says, get rid of them. You know what I'm talking about. The fires that are happening, everything. What do you say to those people that say, just get rid of them like that?
That's a, that's a statement that lacks human empathy. And the United Nations, a couple of years ago, came to Oakland, saw our homelessness crisis, and the words that she described it as was systematically cruel, comparable to some of the worst slums in the rest of the world. And we have to start with a place of empathy, understand why people are on the We have this nationwide model of housing first and housing first works for a great many number of people that are unhoused purely because they're there because they lost their homes. They fell upon some bad financial luck, lost their job, whatnot, ended up unhoused. But there are enough people that are also unhoused, at least a third of the people, for whom housing is not enough. You need true wraparound social services in a way that makes sense, in a, condone by people who have trust in the community. Otherwise, we're going to be simply relocating the problem from one place to another. The faster you shut down encampments, if you're not providing services and housing with dignity in the meantime, that encampment is going to pop up somewhere else. So the real question is, how do we fill that gap? How do we provide to that one-third of the unhoused who are not ready for housing alone? How do we help them with the services that they need? How do we make sure we're talking to the people who know what they're going through, not what we assume is in their best interests?
And how do we do that?
I think firstly, by talking to the grassroots voices. I've, you know, visited and gotten to know folks at several different homeless encampments. It's a very, very diverse community. People have very different ideas based on personal backgrounds, based on the kinds of trauma folks have experienced, based on racial divides, what, what they need. And there's no magic solution and simple answer. But I think from the city council level, it starts with advocating for better funds for mental health and addiction services. It is an extremely complicated maze to be able to access those services right now if you're unhoused. And we need to do better to advocate and collaborate with both the county and the state to get that done. At the same time, I'm a firm believer in making sure that neighborhoods near where encampments are around feel safe. There are very few, there are, but there are remarkably few encampments in District 4. The problem is, the problem of encampments really are in black and brown working class. So if our young children that are already in vulnerable life situations for a whole host of reasons have to sit and walk over needles to get to school, that's not serving them. That's not serving the camp or the RV or whomever is being in that situation parked outside of the school, we have to set boundaries to. And I think we can conduct policy that balances empathy with some amount of pragmatism. No, you might, you cannot live absolutely anywhere if that means you're harming other vulnerable communities in a real way. And that's happening in Oakland right now, too.
Now let's shift gears and talk about District 4. And since I went to Skyline High, class of eighty, and I turned sixty this Thursday, I am, yeah, I, I love the area of, on Mountain and, and Crogan's are my favorite haunts to go to and hang out and watch sports and I've known people who worked at the ice creamery and then the eggplant and the apple press and, you know, da, 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 da. How is the business community, the small businesses, how are they doing from your perspective? What do they need from your perspective and how are you going to help them?
Not great, particularly in the business districts that are closest to me and that I'm most connected to, which is in Diamond, Glenview and Laurel, things are not going great. In Diamond, which is my neighborhood, the amount, the number of businesses with their windows smashed, with ATMs stolen, that have experienced armed robberies in broad daylight is exorbitant. There are so many of some of my favorite restaurants and cafes that have had their, you know, doors smashed into and are struggling to reopen. Most recently, F flavor brewery, just a stone's throw from where I live. My favorite Thai restaurant, Wawa Thai, which has yet to reopen their doors. La Perla Puerto Rican Cuisine, they were able to reopen, but they had a pretty awful armed robbery. And just a block outside, two blocks outside of the district, you have, you know, June from Lucky 377 who was killed. And the crisis is, is exasperating. Things are getting worse. Business owners want to feel safe. They want neighborhood, they want to operate in a way where they don't have to worry about gunshots or robberies or keeping their doors open past 6:00 PM or anything like that. And I think there are great many ways to do this, but one of many things that many small business owners are calling for is a police presence, bike officers, walking officers, solutions that make sense, at least right now, while we're at the peak of this crisis.
Now, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of many things that that's being asked. But apart from that is building community safety in other ways. People also feel uncomfortable walking along MacArthur, crossing streets, pedestrian safety and road paving and cleanliness. These are all factors in the community safety in small business districts. There's a reason you go to Rockridge, best place in Oakland for a pedestrian to cross the street, cars move at a snail's pace, it's fantastic. In MacArthur, you feel uncomfortable, I feel uncomfortable opening my door once I've parked because I think a car is going to zoom at a fifty miles per hour speed and knock down my door. I mean, that is all a part of community safety as well. The more walking humans that we have in these business districts, the safer neighborhood is going to feel.
So you say, everybody says, I say, it's getting worse, it's not getting better. Why should we have elections for new council members? If we have council members in that, they're getting in, they're just running for mayor and not making anything better, okay? How can we count on you to make that difference?
Yeah. If any council member promises, says, makes promises saying that, oh, I can get this done entirely alone, they're wrong. You need five votes to get anything done, to get anything passed, to make any movement. I have been building the relationships with council members, certainly in the last couple, in the last two years, to understand where different existing council members are coming from. And even if there's not a hundred percent policy alignment, I'm focused on getting to know people as individuals and identifying where we do have common ground because we're humans. We always have common ground with other people. There's just this toxic political game, not just right now, but in, that is so pervasive in politics that makes that common ground harder to find for a lot of folks. So it's not just existing council members, of course. We're going to have several vacant seats. District 4 and 6, of course. If Rebecca Kaplan wins, then her at-large seat. If Triva Reed wins, then her seat, that's up, that's between two and four open seats this year. In two years, if other council members from the rest of the districts retire or move on to other tasks or decide not to continue, that's even more council seats open. We're going to have a new mayor and city administrator, new county board of supervisors. This is all a moment of opportunity.
Now, I'm going to ask you a tough question and because I think it's something that's on the minds of people that live in Montclair in different areas. You've got Lena who wants Feel More running against you, who was apparently has the mayor's backing. You've got Rena Webb, who is chief of staff with the current incumbent. Who do you have? Because you've been there a while and you're popular. What makes you better than both of them?
Yeah, well firstly, I will say Rena Webb is not running for this seat. She has, you know, dropped out of the race. She is a friend of mine. She is a wonderful person and, you know, I wish the very best for her in all of her own future professional and personal endeavors and I think she's
Good answer, by the way.
She's done great work for the district and whatever she does after, that'll be great, too. So right now, as of now, there's just the two of us and the reality is, this is Oakland. I knew we would have opponents at some point or the other. It would have been nice if there weren't, but that's democracy. We're going to have at least one opponent, perhaps more. And we've been prepared for that since day one. I launched on January twentieth of this year. We've been building our movement, everything from fundraising, door knocking, collecting endorsements, and most importantly, building community relationships and community trust since January twentieth, but really since last summer. So I believe that we are moving forward with our message of what we want to accomplish for the district. And it doesn't matter who comes in and when and why.
Now, that leads to my, to my next question and part of it is procedural and a big issue I have with the city clerk's office. Have you talked to them about removing Ms. Webb's name? Because it's still there.
I don't know about that. I have not asked, so.
Yeah, and the reason I push this is because Councilmember Taylor was running for, it looked like first reelection of District 6, right? Then there. Now, when Chang came in to run for mayor, she also had the dubious problem of having her name both running for reelection in District 4 and then mayor. I raised this issue with both many times. Chang, however, took, had the city clerk take her name off of reelection for District 4, leaving you as a sole candidate for quite some time. But why is it that, because this actually impacts how people know whether or not you're running and everything else. Shouldn't the city clerk respond every time there's a change like this so that you really know, you know, who, you know, who's doing what?
They should. And I think that's part of government transparency. That's an important part of my platform. You know, I mentioned I served on the City of Oakland Ethics Commission. And the city council, which has the power of the purse, has the ability to increase this, increase the resources of the Ethics Commission, of the city auditor, of other important oversight mechanisms. But a lot of it is going to come from whoever becomes mayor next and whoever becomes our city administrators in particular. Next, for me, transparency and accountability means everything. I'm going to make decisions that not everyone and not all of my constituents and certainly not all of Oakland agrees with. But can I, in an open and transparent way, explain my decision-making process? Explain why funds were moved in the way that they were or projects were voted upon or not? That's what's priority to me. And I hope that we can have that culture of transparency, which has certainly not been the case in much of Oakland's history. I'm excited to see moving forward with my future colleagues, with the new mayor and administrator, how we can make that a reality.
Speaking of lack of transparency, I'd like to turn to Howard Terminal if I may. What are your thoughts on Howard Terminal and how it's going so far?
Yeah, I mean, I'm excited to see the course of the negotiations. I am a supporter of big infrastructure projects if they can provide community benefits, jobs and economic development. And, you know, if the negotiations turn out in the way that they do and it looks like the, the deal shapes up to be in a way that can support local communities, can provide affordable housing, mitigate environmental impacts and create jobs, you know, that could be a big positive for Oakland and I would support it.
What were your thoughts about the idea of putting it on the ballot?
You know, I, I do wish that voters had the ability to decide. And then city council can focus on the will of the people and whatever that outcome would have been. But because it wasn't, you know, I have to deal with the reality that it's probably going to be voted upon before I ever hopefully am in office. So I want to do what, the best, I want to serve the interests of Oakland the best way I can if and when this vote ends up passing by the end of this year. If the project goes through, I certainly want to make sure that the As are held accountable to their word and providing the community benefits, the jobs, the mitigation, all that's needed to make sure that this project can be an economic benefit for Oakland because I do believe it very much has the potential to.
Now, as we close on respect for your time and thank you for doing this, by the way, it's a lot of fun. What's your favorite restaurant District 4?
Oh, can't pick one, have to pick like one in each major neighborhood. La Perla Puerto Rican Cuisine in Diamond. Fantastic, fantastic, fantastic. They have lots of vegetarian and vegan options as well. The owner, Jose Ortiz, is a force of nature and a community advocate for safety, for small businesses, for a whole host of things. Definitely check it out. In the Laurel area, I guess, kind of close to, yeah, in Laurel, there's a fantastic Cambodian restaurant, Nohm Penn. It's been there for a long time. They have another location as well. Again, I'm speaking as a vegetarian. They have excellent vegetarian options in addition to their extensive meat menu. Longtime family-run place, definitely check that one out. And very close to my house, there is, in the other side of Diamond, there is, there are a couple of soul food restaurants. Really, you just have to start going from the tip of MacArthur all the way down and seeing what fancies you. That was the name, Blackberry Bistro, sorry, lying for a second. They've moved from being a traditional western coffee cafe to having Eritrean food for dinners. Fabulous Eritrean food, definitely check that out on, in the Glenview neighborhood as well.
I'll tell you what I miss. This probably goes a bit beyond you, but it's woman, it's a breakfast and lunch place called Anne's that has since closed. It's been a while. It was, if you go down Fruitvale like you're going to, you know, a 580, it was on the right.
It's now Pete's, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That place had this breakfast that consisted of four pancakes piled, uh, and then a pile, it was omelette is literally as big as this, okay? Look at the expression on your face. And, um, and then it had spaghetti on the side on top of that with sauce. Uh, I ate that whole damn thing. I went there Sunday, I was a, a columnist in Montclarion, I just was, and it just sort of happened in the being the columnist because journalism is not my background. Fortunately, the way it's practiced right now, but that's another story. But at any rate, um, and I just literally ate my tail off. Uh, I miss places like that. There's a line out the door. Um, anyway, I just had to get that.
Yeah, that was, that was a long time gem. Um, you know, the Diamond Improvement Association held a forum about Diamond's past, present and future, um, where the old ownership of Anne's, um, you know, spoke about their experiences being here for so many decades and being a neighborhood treasure and you know, the ones, the, the longtime family-run businesses that we have remaining here, I want to do what we can to preserve them.
Can I beg of you to push people to use AB four-six-four? Barbara Bobby Lopez, you may know, uh, spearheaded that and got it, got Gavin, California Governor Gavin Lewis, signed the law in June of last year, AB four-six-four, because it takes enhanced infrastructure financing district legislation allows tax increment financing revenue to be used specifically to help businesses, small businesses impacted by the pandemic. That's actually writing the legislation, recover, and we haven't used it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I'm, uh, I have talked about this type of legislation for seven years. There's only one person that's actually listened to me and tried to put that in action. Do you know who that is?
No.
Oakland Athletics President Dave Cobble.
Wow.
That's it. He'll tell you that, okay? So, you know, it's ridiculous. We can't fix these things. We're counting on you.
Absolutely. Well, I will take that responsibility and drive it forward for all of us.
All right, and come on back and hey, let's get that net last name down.
Ramachandran.
Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ramachandran. I like Ramachandran, Ramachandran, Ramachandran. I've got it, I've got it. You know, I'm, I have a mnemonic, too. It, um, it in a wild way reminds me of a, a city in New York called Runkankama. Actually, it's a, also a train stop. So Ramachandran, Ra-Konkama, Mon-Kankama, Ramachandran, I got it. Hey, stick around in the background. Folks, thank you very much uh, for watching. Remember to subscribe to Zenny sixty-two on YouTube and please bookmark OaklandNewsNowBlog.com and check my new blog. Well, it's my new version of my older blog, OaklandNewsOnline.com. All right, stick around. Johnny will be right, but I say, I always say Johnny because I'm lazy, but it's really Janani, right?
Janani.
John, Janani. It's really Janani. That's, 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 that's easier than xenophon, so, but, you know, it's my name, so. For a long time, I couldn't even say my own name, so keep that in.
Thank you.
Round. All right, thanks. Then this is broadcast. And by the way, folks, check out our website right here. JananiForOakland.com, right there. Check it out, uh, and uh, give her your support. I, I, you know, I think you're doing a fantastic job and uh, you deserve a shot. That's, that's, I just have to say that publicly on camera here. All right. See ya.